Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Thank you for joining us. It is so nice to be back in yellow, which means we're back in the chamber again. So, good evening, and we'll call the meeting to order. First item, common clerk.
Yes, your worship. First item is 2.1 on your agenda. It's the minutes of council of November 30th, 2020.
Okay, thank you. Moved by Counselor Sullivan, thank you. Seconded by Counselor Merrithew, thank you very much. Okay, on the question, please vote now. Okay, thank you. Motion's carried. Next item.
Item 2.2 is the minutes of December 7th, 2020.
Thank you. Moved by the deputy, seconded by Counselor Hickey. Thank you. On the question, please vote now. Okay, thank you. Motion is carried.
Mayor?
It isn't, okay. Mr. Evans in the house?
No, my vote's anyway.
Well, we'll look for your hand, Counselor. Okay. Well, Mr. Evans is here. We'll check it out. Maybe something's unplugged, Counselor. Thank you. Okay, next item, common clerk.
Next item, your worship, is item 3 on the agenda with a few recommendations, a few additions, sorry. The first one is that council acknowledged the receipt of a replacement report for 5.3, an updated report that was emailed earlier that had a change in the, in one of the figures that appeared in the report. Item 17.2 is a recommendation from committee of the whole with respect to fundy key option agreement. And 17.3 would be a committee of the whole recommendation with respect to the mayor's New Year's levy.
Okay, thank you. Deputies move. Counselor Sullivan seconded. Okay, thank you. Do I have that? I don't have that in the system.
Okay.
I don't believe, unless I'm missing it.
Yeah, that should be the next one.
No, it's going right to consent, right?
Well, we'll just do this one by hand.
Yeah, no problem. We'll just do a manual by show of hand. So, the motions on the floor. I'll call the question on approval of the agenda, please. All those in favor? Thank you. And anybody contrary minded, thank you. We did that for you, Counselor Armstrong, just to, so we could all do it your way, the manual way. Thank you. Okay, motions carried. Next item.
Item 4, your worship, disclosures of conflict of interest, if there are any.
Okay, thank you. Just get your microphone, Counselor Hickey. Yes?
Yes, thank you, your worship. Just items 5.2 and 15.2, just an aunt and uncle represented.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Counselor. And Counselor Sullivan?
Your worship, 15-1, and if it's 15-1, it should be 12-2 as well.
15-1 and 12-2. Okay, thank you. You've made some notes, so we can remind folks, okay? Thank you. Anyone else? No. Okay, not seeing any. Thanks. Next item.
Your worship, item 5 is the consent agenda, and I would recommend the removal of 5.2 as Counselor Hickey declared a conflict that can be dealt with separately as 14.1.
Okay, thank you. And Denton?
Move the consent agenda 5.1, 3, 4, 5, and 6.
Thank you. Moved and seconded, sorry, by Counselor Sullivan. Thank you. And I don't see any questions or hands. Okay, thank you. We'll call the vote then.
One quick comment.
Sorry, Counselor Sullivan, go ahead.
Just a quick comment with regards to 5.3, the community center agreement renewals. This is just one of those continued good news stories for the city of St. John where community centers are run by the community. And with continued support from the city of St. John, you know, our partnership is financial and support, but they take that money and leverage it so much more in the neighborhood. So, I know it's on the consent agenda, but it needed a shout-out on the way through. Thank you.
Agreed, thanks. So, we're talking about the Carlton Community Center, the YMCA, Boys and Girls Club. One change, so absolutely, thank you. Okay, thank you. Counselor McKenzie, did you have a question, comment?
Just a question, your worship. In the first agenda, there was a mistake in that. That's been corrected now, so the amounts are all the same for the next few years. Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you, City Manager.
Your worship, members of council, yes, to clarify? That's what the city clerk had mentioned, that we had provided an updated staff report today. The updated staff report has the corrected figure for the funding. So, by approving the consent agenda with the stated overall agenda, you are approving the new figure.
Okay, thank you. Okay, great. I'll call the question, all those, well, sorry, open the voting. Please vote now. Okay, and you're voting in favor, Counselor? Okay, I think Counselor Armstrong votes in favor, and everyone else has voted in favor as well. Okay, thank you. Next item.
Item 6, your worship, members' comments.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Sullivan, kick us off.
Thank you, your worship. First, you know, very impressive, and thank you to the citizens of St. John for getting us out of orange and into yellow phase. You know, that orange phase, again, is tough on local businesses and certainly the restaurants. One thing I found, just following social media, was how restaurants were supporting their competition. They were supporting each other to get through the orange phase, and I really appreciate, I know a lot of citizens were converting to takeout or finding other methods to support local. And now that we're into yellow, there's no reason that we shouldn't be seeing you filling the city market and uptown and the stores west and east, getting ready for Christmas. While you're doing so, even though we're in the yellow phase, we need to stay out of the orange phase. If you're comfortable wearing your mask when you're out and about, please do so. Make sure you're still washing your hands, keeping social distance wherever possible. And, you know, those gatherings of up to 20, it's not any 20. Make sure it's your close relatives and friends. Thankfully, my family and in-laws, we get in under the wire at 19, so we get to have a Christmas dinner, but we can't bring our dogs. So, please be careful, continued vigilance, keep us in yellow, and we can have a happy holiday. Thank you, your worship.
Perfect, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Armstrong?
Thank you, your worship. Just now that we're back live here, just want to remind everyone about the white paper and the report about the fair taxation affects everybody in the province of New Brunswick. Hopefully, that'll get something done. We're gonna make meeting this week with everybody in the provincial government. So, like I said, read the report, understand it, and I'll never stop talking about it as long as I'm in this chair. We need fair taxation for everybody. Also, I just want to, I'll mention it this week and next week, it's the time of the season. It's Merry Christmas time. You know, I don't think anybody's ever thanked that the Irvings have done the Christmas trees my whole life. They set them up, they got a beautiful one over there in Central Care. It's full of lights. You can see it from everywhere. It's nice and bright, and I want to thank the Irving Organization for still saying Merry Christmas, and then they say Happy Holidays. But it's Merry Christmas, and it's the birth of Christ, there's a reason for the season. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hickey?
Thank you, your worship. Certainly echo what Counselor Sullivan mentioned on our return to yellow. I wanted to certainly extend the same thing. Counselor, I won't be able to quite hit the target of our 20 in our family. Last year, just our, on my dad's side, we just peaked over 100. So, we won't be able, we won't be able to hit the 20 mark, but certainly encourage everyone to do so. We won't be having a dinner this year, and I know many other families won't be as well. And I want to thank them for that, no matter how, no matter how difficult it would be. But on that note, we have so many small businesses that have struggled over the last few months, in particular, our restaurants and our retail sector. So, I want to encourage everyone to make sure that when you're thinking about your Christmas gifts, think local, and when you're thinking about where to eat, do the same. So, I know I'll be doing all, and have done, all of my Christmas shopping locally, and want to extend that. And certainly, with the season, a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah. I believe we're on the, what, the 5th day of Hanukkah now, or 4th? Anyway, and extend, any, any way you celebrate, extend it all. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Deputy Mayor?
Oh, thank you, your worship. Well, this is a very special time of the year, and even though it's a very difficult time this year, I just want to say thank you to all the organizations and the community organizations that have helped so many people in the city getting through this difficult time. And I want to say to everyone, if you have the opportunity to give this season, to give to an organization, give to one of our community events, projects that are helping others, just because, if you have that little extra, give a little extra at this time of year because it's such a special time, and there's so many people that are having a very difficult time, and they're gonna have a difficult Christmas, and our hearts go out to them. So, it's a giving time of year, and we should all try to remember that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thanks. Let's make a couple of comments myself. First of all, I echo all the comments about this community never ceases to amaze me with its generosity. I've seen so many organizations have to pivot this year and do things online, whether it be Pro Kids, or Children's Wish, or Rotary, or many other organizations who have done really some amazing work this year and called on the community to, you know, to continue to support, and this community just keeps answering and answering and answering. One of those, one of those events is Harbor Lights. This group has an annual sort of mayor and councils breakfast. It's a lot of fun, it's a lot of stress, as we do our best to cook eggs and sausage and get it out on time, so it makes for fun and stress at the same time. Unfortunately, we're not able to do it this year, so we have launched an online virtual breakfast where we're asking people to donate $5 anyway if they can, or $2, or $1. And really pleased to tell you that last year, we raised about $3,300 we have between now and this coming Friday, and we're at over, over $3,000 already. So, it sounds like council that the virtual breakfast is more popular than the actual breakfast, so I'm not sure what that speaks to in terms of our cooking ability. But anyway, thank you to everybody who's been supporting that. Also, like to say, this Thursday, again, speaking of pivoting, the Chamber of Commerce here in St. John with David DePlessis and his board are having to pivot, and will be at lunchtime, the Outstanding Business Awards. So, there's been a number of people that are being recognized for their contribution to the community this week during that event. It's an online event, so there's still time for you to sign up and participate that Thursday at noon. Also, no relation, but I did receive a couple of notes of congratulations for, I believe I've got this right, I think it's John and Carol Darling's son, Jason's son, Nate, who just played for the Charlotte Hornets in the NBA on Saturday night, his first pro basketball game as a walk-on onto that NBA team. I think they're based out of Halifax now, but I have received a couple of notes congratulating me on my connection to Nate, so I don't know that we're actually related, but anyway, congratulations to Nate Darling for his, his first NBA game with the Charlotte Hornets, obviously an incredible basketball player, and I think some Hammond River connection here to St. John. And for me, that's my comments. Thank you, and Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to everyone, and, and please be safe. And lastly, sorry, Counselor Sullivan, you made me think of it. I think it was a Health Canada advertisement, and it was really fantastic this last week. I tried to find it, to share it, and I couldn't. And it was basically saying, "I'm wearing my masks so I can get back to the weddings and back to the celebrations." So, I know it's been a very difficult 2020 for so many, but just this, you can see now, vaccines are being shipped, you know, 2021's gonna be all about recovery and getting our vaccines, and hopefully getting back to maybe an even better normal, because I think we can redesign an even better normal. So, stick with it, wear your masks, and we can all do our part. Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Your worship, next item would be the third reading of bylaws, and on your agenda, that's item 10.1 to 10.8. And you'll notice there are quite a few bylaws here. Thankfully, on two of the longer bylaws, 10-1 and 10-5, we have advertised those to be read as a summary, so those can be read in summary form. For the rest, it would be the regular, the regular motions required. So, the first one's 10.1, and this is the building bylaw. This is one that was advertised in summary, so it would require two motions from council, one to be read in summary and one to be read by title.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Merrithew. Moved by, by summary, and Deputy Mayor seconded. Thank you. Okay, Counselor Reardon, you have a question?
Thank you, your worship. I had spoke briefly last meeting in regards to this bylaw about salvage, and I want to encourage staff to look for an opportunity for salvage for all kinds of reasons, because, one, the, a lot of the salvage material is usable for someone else, and you've got the cost of tipping involved in that, and we're paying for it because we pay for demolition. You have the impact to, to your landfill. We just bought marine-grade mud for a million dollars, and, and the impact on the environment. So, I just wanted to reiterate that, and it's in page, I'm on page, I looked on page 49, the right to enter. It's still complicated, but it seems like council has the ability to, I guess, allow someone on the property with permission, it says, from the owner or the occupant, but oftentimes with these demolitions, we don't have any verbal communicate, any communication at all with the owner or the occupant, so, but we, yet, we do manage to go on and bring those buildings down because they are a risk to the public, but I'm just wondering if somehow, within all of the things that we do do, that there would be an opportunity to look at salvage. I read this a little closer this time around, all of these 160 pages.
So, Counselor, for tonight, you're just really looking to express that?
I'm just looking to express that. I'm not looking for, you know, anyone to, to speak on it tonight, but I, I just want to reiterate it because I think it is important for us to look at that in the future.
Thank, thank you, Counselor. I just will build on that really quickly. And again, the spirit of it, I support 100%, and you know, of course, the, as you mentioned, you know, about entering and who owns the buildings and safety and all those things. But, but at a high level, I had a conversation about this, or it happened online, I don't recall, with Brent Harris from the Tool Library, and, and you know, it was one of those, like, aspirational, wouldn't it be amazing if we had some way for these materials to be, you know, made available for folks to reuse, you know, whether it be old timbers, or whether it be brick, or what have you? So, I, you know, I think the, I think the spirit of the conversation is a very interesting one, and, and I think, you know, Ms. Paffenroth is there, and, and Jacqueline behind us and the city manager, so I guess just to, to receive that feedback for tonight? Yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'll call the question then, please, it says entirety on our screen, but it's actually in summary.
It's in summary.
Okay, thank you. So, I'll call the question, and please vote now. Thank you. Okay, thank you. And, so, missing maybe, so, maybe I missed your votes, Counselor Norton. How did you want to vote on that? I closed it already, so, in favor, thank you, and Counselor Armstrong? I missed your vote in favor as well. Thank you. Okay, motion's carried.
And the summary form of this is, the bylaw is entitled a bylaw respecting the construction, repair, and demolition of buildings and structures in the city of St. John. The building bylaw is being repealed and replaced as a result of changes required to be in line with the Updated Community Planning Act. The two main proposed changes in the bylaw are permit fee increases and new fee for electrical waivers.
So, just procedurally, common clerk, if we wanted to protest and have that read in its entirety, we could do that on the next?
Absolutely, your worship. I'd be happy to.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, thank you. And by title, council? Deputies, and Counselor Hickey, thank you. And let me just advance the slide here. 10-1 by title. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, and Counselor Armstrong voted in favor manually. Okay. Motion's carried.
The title is, "A Bylaw Respecting Construction, Repair, Demolition of Buildings and Structures in the City of St. John."
Okay, thank you. Next item?
10-2 is the Plumbing Bylaw Amendment, looking for third reading. This could have two motions for reading in entirety and by title.
Sorry, common clerk, did Counselor McKenzie, did I miss something?
Just a point of order, your worship. Are we being broadcast by the YouTuber Rogers? Understanding or not?
Your worship, as we have mentioned to the media outlets, is our ability right now is to immediately post the feed after we have concluded the event. Our bandwidth currently does not support with the high-resolution cameras in this chamber us doing simultaneous broadcasts, so it will be posted as soon as we are, as soon as we have done the activity for this evening.
Okay, so we're still legal?
Pardon me?
It's okay to do it this way, though.
Yes, we're, it's still an open session. All the material is available to the public. The media have been invited to attend, and therefore, we satisfy the requirements of an open session of council.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Back to you, common clerk. Where was?
So, we were looking for two motions for the 10.2 plumbing bylaw. First motion to read it in its entirety.
Moved, thank you, deputies, seconded by Counselor Casey. Thank you. Okay, and that's 10.2. Thank you. Please vote now. Okay, Counselor Armstrong votes in favor. Thank you. And that's unanimous. Thanks.
A bylaw respecting plumbing in the city of St. John, be it enacted by common council, the city of St. John convened as follows. A bylaw, the city of St. John entitled a bylaw respecting plumbing in the city of St. John enacted on the 5th day of August 2014, is hereby amended as follows, effective January 1, 2021. 1, paragraph 5.2E is repealed and replaced with the following. 5.2E, subject to section 5.1, a permit fee of $70 plus plumbing fixture fee of $22 for each plumbing fixture to be installed.
Okay, thank you. And by title? Thank you, Deputy, and Counselor Hickey again. Thank you. And no questions, thanks. Please vote now. Okay, thank you. Motion's carried. Counselor Armstrong voted in favor.
A bylaw respecting plumbing in the city of St. John.
Thank you. Next item?
10-3, your worship's Water and Sewerage Bylaw Amendment for permit fees. This is for third reading as well. It would require two motions, a reading in its entirety, and then by title.
Okay, thank you. Moving by Counselor Hickey, Counselor Merrithew, thank you. On the question, bear with me, 10-3. Okay, please vote now. Okay, thank you. It's unanimous vote. Counselor Armstrong voted in favor.
A bylaw to amend a bylaw respecting water and sewage, be it enacted by common council, the city of St. John as follows. A bylaw, the city of St. John entitled a bylaw respecting water and sewage, enacted on the 7th day of June 2004, is hereby amended as follows, effective January 1, 2021. 1, subsection 2.3 is repealed and replaced with the following. 2.3, no permit shall be issued under this section until a fee of $150 is paid for inspection of the installation of services or laterals which must be carried out in the satisfaction of the commissioner. It shall be necessary for a permit to be issued and the corresponding fee paid on a per-property basis.
Thank you. By title? Counselor Sullivan, seconded by Counselor Casey. Thank you. And please vote now. Thank you. Motion is carried unanimously.
A bylaw to amend a bylaw respecting water and sewage.
Okay, thank you. Next item?
10-4, your worship, is subdivision bylaw amendment for third reading. Same with this one, it requires a motion to read in its entirety and then by title.
Okay, thank you. Moved, Deputy Mayor, seconded by Counselor Hickey. Thank you. And on the question, please vote now. Okay, thank you. Motion is unanimously voted. Thank you.
A bylaw to amend the subdivision bylaw, the city of St. John, be it enacted by common council, the city of St. John as follows. The subdivision bylaw, the city of St. John enacted on the 21st day of March 2016, and further amended from time to time, is amended as follows, effective January 1, 2021, by repealing Schedule A fees and substituting the attached Schedule A fees.
Thank you. By title? Thank you, Counselor Hickey. Deputy Mayor, thank you. And please vote now. Unanimous vote. Thank you.
A bylaw to amend the subdivision bylaw of the city of St. John.
Thank you. Next item?
10-5, your worship, is the Street Excavation Bylaw. This is one that was advertised in summary, so it would require two motions, reading by summary and by title.
Deputy Mayor moved, seconded by Counselor Casey. Thank you. Question, Counselor Reardon?
Thank you, your worship. I just have a couple of little quick questions about this one. Street excavation, sometimes you would need more than, more than one location of excavation, so it said, I think in here, you can apply for a permit for multiple excavations or just the singles. Is there a differential in the cost of those?
Ms. Paffenroth will come to the podium.
I missed the little tray here for all my stuff. Thank you, worship. Yes, so, just making sure, Counselor, I heard the question properly. So, if there's multiple excavations on the same project or PID?
Yeah, it sounded like when I read through that, that you could have multiple, I guess, places for excavation, or you, or you, or singles, but you could buy like a permit for all of them, or do them singly out over time. So, I was just wondering if there was a differential on the cost of that, because I think it says here also that you have to make a security deposit of $500. I didn't know if that was per, per excavation, or if you got a multiple permit, if it was just $500 once, or if it was just one big permit fee, or?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, thank you, I understand. So, I guess the difference is, is that there'd be the one permit fee, but it depends on the, the amount, the per-square meter. So, your variable is how much you're actually cutting into the street or sidewalk or right-of-way. So, that's where you'll get the variable rate. So, it'll depend on the amount of asphalt that you're cutting into.
Oh, so it's measured, and the permit would be based on the measurements of the, of what has to be done?
That's right.
Okay, so now, I'm asking because, you know, on the peninsula, a lot of the streets are old, and it said that when you reclaimate the street, you would, it would, there's a certain cost to doing it, if it's a new street, if it's over so many years or whatever. But does anyone have a look at that? Like, is, do you take a picture? Are you expected to take a picture of it before and, and bring it back to what it was then? Or like, I'm just wondering, because, you know, a patch job on, on the peninsula would probably be far better than most of what's conditioned, most of this, a lot of the streets are in, versus the ones that have just recently been done there. But I mean, wherever, we're having some excavation.
Through your worship, yes, so, I mean, it's a, the variable rate varies on the amount that you're excavating. It also depends, as you mentioned, on how old the street is. So, if it's, if it was just repaired or put in place last year, then it's a higher, higher amount, because the, the, the maintenance now is going to be greater than if it had been left undisturbed. So, it is variable, again, with the age of the, of the infrastructure. So, if it's a, a street that hasn't been, you know, updated in decades, you know, then the, the fee is extremely low.
Now, what about the barriers? It talks about barriers in there. Are the barriers standardized? Because I've seen some barriers that's had hand-painted danger on them, or do this, does the city have a, I never know sometimes, like, who's doing the work, and if there's a standardized, some of them look like Mickey Mouse, right? If there's a standardized barrier that they should be using, because I, you know, there's barriers, it says you have to keep access for cars and the pedestrians, and then, of course, fire hydrants, but the barriers have to be erected as well. So, do we require a standardized barrier, or?
Through your worship, that is a very good question, and I, I would have to get back to you. I assume we have a standard, but I would have to double. back to you, I assume we have a standard, but I would have to double-check on that.
All right, I just, I was just wondering if a piece of plywood painted with danger on it is acceptable?
That is a fair question.
You know, and sometimes, I mean, I'm not saying the city would use that, but sometimes someone who's bought the permit would use something like that, so it's, it's sort of like you don't really, I guess it doesn't, doesn't give you confidence in the project, anyway.
Yep.
All right, thanks so much, Amy.
I'll double-check on that, yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Popov, okay, thank you, and lost my place by title now, common clerk?
Your worship, I don't believe we called the question on summary?
I think we did vote by summary, but I don't think we voted yet by title, but I think the motion's on the floor.
Okay.
Yeah, because, sorry, we, we, we had it on the floor, and then we went to a question before I called the vote, so I think I'm calling the vote on title now.
On summary?
On summary, okay, hold on, let me back up, let me back the train up here then. We're on 10-5, by summary.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, I'll, I'll call the vote then, please vote now. Thank you, I lost my, lost my way. Thank you, motion is carried. Nah, thank you, over to you.
Oh, it didn't display those.
Uh, sorry, uh, there we go.
Okay. So this bylaw is entitled "A Bylaw Respecting Excavation of Streets in the City of St. John", and the Excavation of Streets Bylaw Amendment is being modernized to reflect the enabling legislation, the Local Governance Act, instead of referencing the previous Municipalities Act. There are also housekeeping items to reflect updated position titles as a result of recent organization restructure. Updating the fees for inflation is the main driver for this set of fees.
Okay, thank you, and by title, thank you, deputy, seconded by Counselor McKenzie, thank you. And on the question, please vote now. Okay, thank you, it's unanimous vote, Counselor Armstrong voted in favor.
A Bylaw Respecting Excavation of Streets in the City of St. John.
Okay, thank you, next item?
10-6 is the Water and Sewage Bylaw Amendment, Schedules A, B, and C. This is third reading and would require a motion to read in entirety and then by title.
Thank you, thank you, deputy, seconded by Counselor McKenzie, thank you, sorry, I missed you, Counselor Casey, I'll look right next time. Okay, thank you, and please vote now. Okay, thank you, Counselor Armstrong voted in favor. Okay, thank you.
A Bylaw to amend a bylaw respecting water and sewage.
Thank you, by title, Counselor Casey, got it? Thank you. Oh, we have to read it, I, sorry, I got excited.
No, it's okay, I know.
Go ahead, read it.
Be it enacted by common council, the City of St. John as follows. A bylaw the City of St. John entitled "A Bylaw Respecting Water and Sewage," enacted on the seventh day of June 2004, is hereby amended as follows. One, Schedules A and B are repealed and the following are substituted. Schedule A, effective January 1, 2021, flat-rate customers, yearly rate of $791.80. Schedule B, effective January 1, 2021, metered customers with meter size of 15 will be a rate of $267.54, with a size of 20-millimeter, $327.48, 25-millimeter, $447.22, 40-millimeter, A meter size of 55, of 50, sorry, would be a yearly rate of $1,173.10. Of 75-millimeter, would be $2,437.74. Of 100-millimeter, $4,239.36. Of 150-millimeter, $6,662.56. 200-millimeter, $9,573.48. And 250-millimeter and up, $12,965.90. And for meter customers, the monthly rate for the first 50 meters cubed would be $1.9944, and for all in excess would be $1.2700. And with Schedule C, effective January 1, 2021, sanitary sewer surcharge, the charge for sanitary sewer charges is calculated as 80.35% of the customer's bill for water services, including both consumption and service charges.
Thank you, by title, Counselor Casey, I think had it, seconded by Counselor Sullivan, thank you. And please vote now. Okay, thank you. Motion's carried.
A Bylaw to amend a bylaw respecting water and sewage.
Thank you, next item?
10.7 is another Water and Sewage Bylaw Amendment for Schedule E, third reading again, would require motion in its entirety and then by title.
Okay, thank you, by entirety, deputy, seconded by Counselor McKenzie, thank you. And, see no lights, please vote now. Thank you, motion's carried.
Law to amend a bylaw respecting water and sewage, be it enacted by the common council of the City of St. John as follows. A bylaw the City of St. John entitled "A Bylaw Respecting Water and Sewage," enacted on the seventh day of June 2004, is hereby amended as follows. One, Schedule E, mentioned in Sections 43 and 44, is repealed, and Schedule E, heretofore annexed, is substituted.
Thank you, by title, Counselor Sullivan, Counselor Riordan, thank you. And, please vote now. Thank you, motion's carried.
A law to amend a bylaw respecting water and sewage.
Okay, thank you, next item?
10.8 is a proposed municipal plan amendment, zoning bylaw amendment, and Section 59 conditions for 2304 to 2310 Ocean Westway. This is for third reading, and it would require five motions, motion for the municipal plan reading in it, in its entirety, and then by title, and then zoning bylaw reading in entirety, Section 39 approval, and zoning by title.
Okay, thank you, municipal plan entirety, thank you, Counselor Merrithew, seconded by Counselor Hickey, thank you. And, see no lights, so please, vote now. Thank you, motion's carried.
A law to amend the municipal plan bylaw, be it enacted by the City of St. John and common council convened as follows. The municipal plan bylaw, the City of St. John enacted on the 30th day of January 2012, is amended by one, amending Schedule A, city structure by redesignating a parcel of land with an area of approximately 1.61 hectares located at 2304 to 2310 Ocean Westway, also identified as PID number 55007074, and a portion of PID number 00465856, from stable area to employment area classification. Two, amending Schedule B, future land use by redesignating a parcel of land with an area of approximately 6,258 square meters located at 2304 to 2310 Ocean Westway, also identified as PID number 55007074, and a portion of PID number 00465856, from stable residential to stable commercial classification. And three, amending Schedule B, future land use by redesignating a parcel of land with an area of approximately 9,879 square meters located at 2310 Ocean Westway, also identified as a portion of PID 00465856, from rural resource to stable commercial classification.
Thank you, by title, Counselor Casey, thank you, Counselor Riordan, second. Thanks, please vote now. Thank you, motion's carried.
A law to amend the municipal plan bylaw.
I'm just thinking that as I'm sitting here, this is the moment where Rogers viewership just spikes up as we do 17 motions on bylaws in a row, but anyway, we, it is municipal government at its best here, so, okay, thank you, we love it, zoning, right?
This is zoning, your worship.
Zoning by entirety.
Yep.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and Counselor Riordan, thank you. And let me see if I can catch the machine up. By, yep, thank you, please vote now. Okay, thank you, motion's carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw, the City of St. John, be it enacted by the St. John and common, the City of St. John and common council convened as follows. The zoning bylaw, the City of St. John enacted on the 15th day of December 2014, is amended by amending Schedule A, the zoning map of the City of St. John by rezoning a parcel of land having an area of approximately 1.08 hectares located at 2310 Ocean Westway, also identified as a portion of PID number 00465856, from two-unit residential to general commercial pursuant to a resolution adopted by common council under Section 59 of the Community Planning Act.
Thank you, by title? Thank you, deputy, Counselor Hickey, thank you.
We read Section 59.
Sorry, I didn't, we did zoning by entirety, don't we need to do title?
Then Section 59, then title.
Hold on, now you're mixing me up.
Section 59 goes before title, so that's next, yes.
Thank you, Section 59, thank you, deputy moves, Section 59, Counselor Hickey, thank you. Whew, we're gonna need a recess, I think, after, Section 59, okay, thank you, please vote now. Counselor. All right, thank you, motion's carried. Okay, now title.
And title.
Okay, thank you, and we'll come down this way, Counselor Riordan, Counselor Casey, thank you. Let me, okay, and please vote now. Okay, thank you, motion's carried.
A law to amend the, a law to amend the zoning bylaw, the City of St. John.
That it?
And that's it, worship?
You couldn't stuff any more of those on there? City manager, thank you. Counselor Armstrong, payback is sweet, do you need a break from your arm over there, Counselor Armstrong, you okay? All right, good. Excellent, next item, please.
Your worship, 12-1 is an update by the city manager.
Okay, thank you, city manager.
Your worship, I don't know how I can top that, that last agenda item. I'll be very brief this evening, not because there's not a lot to talk about, but things continue to go well. First of all, I will highlight to members of council that our action plan to restore all of our IT services following the cyber attack we experienced in November continues to be on track, and there are no significant issues to identify. I would wish to make one point to the public with respect to the payment of bills. We have highlighted that online payment to the city is not possible at this time. However, there are indeed many other ways for individuals to pay their bills, and we would certainly ask customers to continue to do so. If any customers have questions about what possible ways they can pay their bills, they simply need to contact our customer service center, and we will provide them that necessary information. Turning to my second point, as has already been discussed this evening, we are back into COVID yellow. You will recall that I mentioned that when we went to orange, with the exception of some parks and recreation adjustments we needed to do, and some are adjustments to our meetings, there wasn't really that significant a change in terms of city services. Now that we have transitioned back to yellow, we have readjusted those parks and recreation programming requirements and meeting requirements to fully configure or conform with the yellow phase. The, the restrictions in yellow are still significant, and therefore, expectations must be managed in terms of the delivery of those services. In addition to the cyber, in addition to COVID that we have been dealing with for many, many months, I'm happy to report that the staff continues to work on all the other initiatives within the city. Early in the new year, we will report on our results of our 2020 work plan, what we did manage to achieve, what has had to be delayed or postponed, and more importantly, we will outline our 2021 work plan, which remains aggressive and ambitious in terms of productivity. With that, your worship, that concludes the city manager's update for this evening, subject to any questions.
Okay, thank you very much, move, received and filed by the deputy, thank you, Counselor McKenzie, second. Just to, just to comment very quickly, I guess, you know, we just went through a whole series of housekeeping and bylaw tonight, and, and I, you know, it's sort of, I was joking a little bit about it, but, but I, I would note for anyone in the gallery, or anyone watching at home later on, you know, we did have a whole number of our staff that you'll notice, you know, whatever time it is at, at night here, it's 6:30 or 7 o'clock at night, they, there's, you know, hundreds, thousands of hours that go into bylaws to protect the community, to find balance, to, to cross Ts and dot Is, and, you know, they're all here, just in case we have any questions, so, very, very important. Bylaws really, in many ways, set the, the guideposts, if you will, for the community, and behind those are, you know, hundreds, if not thousands, of hours of staff time, and once that item is, is dealt with, and you saw, you know, a few people from our, our team leave tonight, because they've probably been here since 7:30 or, you know, 8 o'clock this morning, so, you know, municipal politics is, is the closest to the people, and it takes a tremendous commitment by, by staff and by council members to, to serve the community, so, I was jesting a bit about it, but, but, but there's a tremendous amount of work that goes into those, into those bylaws, and city manager, thank you for your report, and, you know, 2021 can only get better from where we were, it's been a challenging 2020, but there's been a lot of really great work done at the City of St. John in 2020, so we look forward to celebrating that as we, we go into, to another year. Okay, let me pull up the items, city managers, receive and file, please vote now. Okay, thank you, motion's carried, next item, common clerk?
Your worship, 12.2 on the agenda is the Winter Management Plan Overview.
Sorry, did I, did I get the vote? Maybe, I didn't do it properly, sorry, please vote now, yeah. All right, I messed it up, I apologize. Okay, there we go. All right, thank you, and now we're on to winter management, why is? Sorry. Bear with me for a minute, sorry, there we go, okay, thank you, and your podium is on, Commissioner Higginholdts, over to you, thanks.
Good evening, your worship, and members of council. Here before you this evening with a more general overview of our winter management plan for the 2020, 2021 season. You'll recall that we spoke last in November 9, I believe, about some proposed changes to sidewalks, I'm going to touch specifically on some adjustments to that plan, I'm going to talk in general about some of the other changes to the winter management plan for this upcoming season, so it won't be as broad as we've presented in previous years, but certainly if there are any questions about other aspects of the plan, I would be happy to touch on those. I just also want to acknowledge Catherine Shannon, who's with us here this evening as well, she's one of our operations managers, and she's done a lot of work on the report and presentation here this evening, and definitely want to thank the rest of my operations team, who've worked very hard to make all the adjustments to the routes coming into the season. So just some quick facts here, we would presented this, this has stayed generally consistent, so we plow about 1,160 lane kilometers of streets in the city, that's, that's a lot. Of course, the challenges of our geography and infrastructure are well-known, and we certainly see that when we have to plow off the streets after a significant snowstorm. We also plow this year about 225 kilometers of sidewalk, that's down slightly from 240 kilometers previously, it represents approximately 55% of our overall inventory. We do have 47, approximately 47 primary pieces of equipment that are used to clear the streets and sidewalks, and there's about an additional six that are used to clear parks, arenas, and other recreational facilities. On a given year, we'll use up to 13,000 tons of salt and about 3,000 tons of sand, so our, our depots in the east and west ends of the city, you'll see them rampacked right about now, with everybody getting ready for the upcoming season. So I, I do want to focus on the changes going into this season. I am pleased to say that we have maintained our service level standards, those have been Those have been well-established since the new winter management plan was adopted back in 2009. And despite some significant changes to resource levels, we have not had to make any adjustments to service level standards in terms of the deliverables for street plowing and sidewalk plowing. There are some big changes going into this year in terms of the street plowing. So, we've taken an approach to sort of maximize the effectiveness in terms of our use of heavy equipment. So, we've rebalanced the shift split between the day and night shift. We've more, moved more people onto the night shift. This can allow for full use of our heavy equipment around the clock in the event of winter storms. So, overnight, we will have a slightly enhanced capacity for street plowing during those hours. Depending on the time of the storm, this could result in better outcomes in the early morning. Conversely, we will have fewer resources during the day. So, we, we think that in terms of the service level objectives, that that's going to be more or less a wash, so we've not had to, to adjust our deliverables. We always talk, when we talk winter management, we always talk about managing the entire event. So, this is not an event that takes a few hours and we're done. Really, our preparation starts well in advance of a storm, where we're getting our equipment ready, we're getting everything loaded up and ready to go for the storm, and then we strategically make the decision of when to deploy our resources. And we do manage not only during the winter storm event itself, but for several hours and days afterwards. In fact, many of our deliverables go as long as four days after the end of a storm in terms of achieving specific objectives. I want to mention as well that for this upcoming winter season, we have doubled our capacity for direct liquid application of brine on the roadways. This is an initiative we started probably about four or five years ago now. So, when we do know a winter event is coming in, and if it's not going to be preceded by rain, we'll get out there and spray liquid brine directly on the roadway. That kind of dries out, you'll see a little bit of a dusting of salt. But when the snow starts to fall again, basically, that'll activate that salt, and it'll start that melting process immediately. That gives us more time in the early hours of a storm. It stops that store, that snow from sticking to the road and can help us achieve better outcomes overall. So, with respect to sidewalks, we had discussed some changes, approximately just over 15 lane, 15 kilometers of sidewalk that we were, we were looking to change going into this winter season. We did receive some feedback from council during that meeting and sub, in subsequent days. In addition, operations staff did meet with officials from the Anglophone South School District, as well as representatives from St. John Transit, to discuss the impact of those changes on their operation, where their bus stops were, where they had a lot of people using those, how people were going to be able to move around and still access those bus stops. As a result of that discussion, we have added back in several route sections, and I just want to highlight in particular three of them. First and foremost, we did hear about concern about Silver Falls neighborhood. You'll recall that we had proposed basically stopping service of that, that area. So, we have instituted a loop back through there. It goes up and follows the, the transit route. So, that neighborhood will retain some good service for this winter season. One of the sections we had looked to reduce or cut back on as well was the east side of Rossay Avenue from Ashburn Lake Road to Russell Street. In discussions with Transit, we learned that there were a couple of challenges there. I mean, the, the thinking overall was that we were servicing both sides of that road. So, what we hope to do is have people travel on one side and then cross where they needed to access their place of work or their transit stop. But in reviewing that in more detail and looking at the location of those transit stops, we determined that that probably wasn't feasible, just because there, there are very few options for folks to cross that busy road. There's very few crosswalks, and that's a, you know, two lanes in each direction. So, we are going to retain the servicing of that east side section. I guess there is an item on council's agenda this evening as well, with some, some parents writing in about Glen Falls School. We had engaged with the district on that actually earlier on as well, and we understand that they had made a, a change to the loading and unloading of students back sometime last year. As a result, Tim Street is quite busy in the morning with parents dropping off or picking up their children. That is a short section of sidewalk, so we are able to add that back in for servicing. To balance off these areas that, that have been added back in, we are looking at a couple of areas where we are going to remove. These are, again, generally areas that both sides of the sidewalk were being serviced. And in particular, Commerce Drive, Consumers Drive, and a section of West Moreland. We have removed some redundant sections where the other side is serviced, and there are no transit stops or anything that would require the other side to be cleared. Couple other changes, you know, one of the issues that we've, challenges that we've talked to with council in the past is just outcomes on sidewalks, what is within our control. So, essentially, you know, we end up with a bit of a tunnel effect at sidewalks sometimes. There is not dedicated drainage systems for the sidewalks. So, when you get those snowbanks built up on either side, what tends to happen is with our freezing and thawing temperatures, we'll get some melting, and then that will refreeze, and you'll end up with sidewalks that are, are quite icy. So, we had added in an icebreaker about a couple of years ago to use once that does, once we do get a, a lot of ice built up there. Salt won't necessarily do the trick in terms of getting rid of that. So, this year, we have added a second icebreaker, so we're going to have some enhanced capacity there. I want to highlight as well that, you know, it's not just about plowing snow from streets and sidewalks in the wintertime. We do have other duties, including pothole patching and repair of utility cuts. So, we have added another asphalt recycler. So, that should enhance our winter pothole patching capabilities and make us less reliant on cold mix, which is not as durable. I always touch on that this is shared responsibility during the winter season. St. John residences and businesses definitely have a role to play this year more than ever, and that's just allowing extra travel time during winter storm events, having appropriate tires and footwear for the conditions, not dumping snow from their properties onto public streets and sidewalks, and having patience and expect, reasonable expectations for snow clearing. I would be remiss if I didn't also mention that folks should always have a 72-hour emergency preparedness kit available. With that, your worship, I'll be pleased to answer any questions that there may be.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner, Counselor Riordan can kick us off.
Thank you, worship. Like, I've just got a couple of quick questions for you in here, and it's hard for me to get to this because on this laptop, as everybody knows, I can't just go to the page I want, I have to scroll through all 500 pages. But there's, it lists paths. What is a path that we were plowing, and what equipment, it says there's not, the equipment isn't available for?
Yeah, there, there are some kind of shortcut paths that exist in various areas of the city. They're not, they're not, strictly speaking, they're not a road, they're not even a sidewalk. They're paths that are, some of them are more formal, some are informal shortcut type of paths that just add connectivity between different areas of a neighborhood. In this particular case, this is, these aren't paved paths. So, we have made some changes to our equipment, and we used to have a tract bombardier machine that could get into these areas, and, and they could plow it off. But we, we no longer have those machines, and our, our newer trackless machines are probably better overall for servicing paved or concrete sidewalks. But these paths, they don't do so well, and they tear it up, they get stuck at times. So, consequently, we've had to stop servicing those two paths.
Okay, the other question I had is about sand and salt. Do most municipalities use sand? I mean, it's labor-intensive, you, well, you'd spread sand or salt, but you have to pick up sand. At the end of the day, you're putting down 3,000 tons, so is it normally used in most places? Are people moving away from sand? It's hard on your roads, I mean, it grinds off your paint. It's hard for walkers, it's hard for people that use bikes in the spring.
Yeah, I guess I'd say, Counselor, through you, your worship, a lot of municipalities are more heavily reliant on sand than salt. Sand is certainly a cheaper commodity. We, it has its use, though. It's, it has its use, for example, on sidewalks when there's a lot of ice there. This, and if salt is unlikely to melt all of that ice, we put down the sand to give us some grit. And even just a, you know, salt has an effective temperature range in which it works. If it's colder than that, we have no choice but to use a lot of sand instead.
Now, you mentioned about plowing snow onto city streets by residents, and I don't disagree. I'd like to see, I don't know, I'd like to see some sort of mechanism in place that would be a disincentive for that, I guess, because I see it happening. People with snow blowers, they just tilt them out into the street, and away they go to do their driveways or whatever. So, I would like to see, I don't know what, like I said, what a best practice would be with that, but I know, I know some municipalities find you if they catch you doing that, so it might be something that we might, might want to contemplate. The only other thing, observation about this is on page 351 in the kit, it says, "The Winter Management Plan breaks down the city streets into four priorities. Number one, arterial streets, highways, connections, and emergency routes." So, right away, it says to me, commuters, you get priority. And the other thing in it, it says, "But priority one and two are eight hours after the end of the storm for travel lanes that are passable. But for sidewalks, there's priority one, then priority two, three, and four." So, priority one, 12 hours after the end of the storm, so pedestrians would be not prioritized as much as the car would be. I'm always harping, and I know everybody's probably sick of hearing me talk about it, but at the end of the day, I would like to see us, and I'm not blaming you for this at all, because I know that that's the message that council has sent you, and I know that that's probably, it may even be a best practice, I don't know, but I just feel like that our, our local roads, while they're not arterials and highway connectors and all this other stuff, for the people who live here, we make a difference to them to have their roads a priority versus the other. And I know a lot of people have to come in to go to work, but if you work outside the municipality, then it's snow, and traveling is just something that choice that you make, in my opinion. So, that's all I'll say about that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Counselor Hickey.
Thank you, your worship. Just a quick one for you, sure. Certainly appreciate the changes that were made to, to the plan. I know that there was some confusion about it in one of our previous meetings. Guess my question, or maybe more so of a statement, but I hope moving forward in next year, as we, as we plan for this, we can, we can look, and I know I mentioned this last time, but look more at that shared responsibility model. I know, I know we, I know it was briefly mentioned, but look at more, something more robust. I know there's a lot of cities around the country, and I'm sure elsewhere, that have adopted models that support folks that live next to a sidewalk to take care of that sidewalk. So, hopefully, we can look at something that going into the new year and into our next season. But glad to see the changes made here, certainly some challenging cutbacks, but as is such, and hopefully, hopefully next year, we can look at a model like that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Norton.
Yeah, thank you, worship, through you to, to Mr. Huguenot. When we're, when we're looking at the west side, for the reason specifically, many times, routes have been removed because of the removal of two pieces of equipment. I'm just doing a bit of a, you're gonna have to help me here as a ward counselor. When I look at the other wards, I, I don't necessarily, not that it doesn't exist, don't necessarily see that same reason being applied as consistently in the other areas of the, of the city. So, I'm just trying to get an understanding as to why the reason for, for example, Gaelic Drive, almost in the very backyard of Island View School, pretty populated, densely populated residential community, lots of school-aged children in there. Even places like Costa Street, I mean, I used to be on Costa Street. You could throw a snowball and hit one of two crosswalks right in front of St. Rose and, and Barn Hill. So, the same reasons for removing other sections of sidewalk don't exist in the other one. So, like, what's happening with the west side as it relates to equipment?
Yeah, through you, your worship. Our two routes that are on the west side, there's two separate routes. They are and have been one of the longest routes in the city. So, they, they were already stretched. There's going to be some demand to, to pull, to bolster up some other routes as well. So, I guess our approach on, on that, you know, those routes and the others in the city, was we really look for opportunities where, for example, there were smaller streets that didn't see a huge amount of vehicle traffic, that were more local streets with only the neighbors on that street that would have been driving it, and look at those as sort of the, the best areas where we could, you know, stop servicing those sidewalks. So, we, we looked at not only, you know, sort of get a sense of pedestrian flow, bus stops in that area, what those routes to school, what they are, and then what, what's the vehicle traffic. So, you know, for example, like Rossay Avenue, for example, we don't want anybody walking on the side of, of a road that's seeing a lot of traffic. So, most of the reductions that we'll see were sort of local streets, like Costa Street.
Is, is Galt Road, will Galt Road have any servicing at all? Like, it's not connected to a larger sidewalk network, like, like there's daycares on that, like, that one's going to be problem, problematic, I... Does, are any sidewalks, are we, are we causing pedestrians on the Galt Road completely to be walking on the road?
There, yeah, under this plan, we won't be servicing Galt Road.
I mean, there's, I, as a, as a ward counselor, I mean, this doesn't satisfy, I, I can see from a 30,000-foot level as a at-large counselor, being like, okay, yeah, I, I get this. I mean, as a ward counselor, you're, you're right, as it relates to the ge, the geographic size of the west side is the largest. I believe it's, it's, if it's not as big as the east side, it's certainly very close. And in terms of population, it's either first or second. But I see it coming in very much last place as it relates to the servicing of that. And, and the west side is such a densely populated residential area as well. But, I mean, the, even the list, just looking at the list, it, it eclipses what's being removed as it relates to north, central, and east. I, I wouldn't want the geographic complexion of the west side being, I guess, to some degree, working against it in terms of the service it's being applied for, but, I mean, the Galt Road?
Counselor, can I, can I just, I've got two or three other speakers, can I just have you formulate?
I guess what I'm trying to express is, I need to hear my frustration as it relates to this, and I, I'm not sure how we get to a win, but I certainly see, I supported, I, I supported this plan last year. I can't support it this year. Thank you.
No, thanks. I just was going to ask you just to formulate maybe a few questions or other questions. I'll come back to you, Counselor. I just wanted to keep, keep going and be fair on the clock here, so Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, worship. I don't really have a question, Commissioner, but I wanted to compliment you, because I think from the last time you were here in November, and there were several issues that you've addressed them all to you and your staff, and it's a tough year. It's tough doing all the snowblowing that we do. And I think everybody should be advised... It's tough doing all the snowplowing that we do, and I think everybody should be advised that, you know, there will be some cutbacks, there will be a bit of difference in our scheduling and, and our, our work, because we've had so many cutbacks in the city. So I just want to say that, because sometimes I think that people kind of ask for too much, you know, like, they want everything done exactly the same. And when you talk to, about paths, these private paths, and I know there's several that people have used, but we can't do it all. So I think that for you and your team, that you've done well to get the whole city covered, but we can't do everything that we've always done. So thank you for that.
Okay, thank you, Deputy. Counselor McKenzie.
Thank you, your worship. Well, I, I guess I would echo those remarks, in particular, Catherine Shannon's been a great help, and I appreciate the work that's going into it. My question is regarding purchasing power. Do we, A, purchase all of the salt and sand at once and get it in one lump sum, or do we get it in different parts of the year?
Through you, your worship, we do buy in bulk. I believe we're piggybacking off the provincial contract this year. So we, we do take advantage of a very good rate right now.
Okay, so we are involved with the provincial government. My second question was gonna be, do we partner with areas around St. John to obtain salt and sand?
I suspect many of those municipalities are taking advantage of that same provision in the provincial procurement that allows municipalities to piggyback. I'll also point out that we, we do work with other municipalities, like, for example, the recent sidewalk machines that we got, were bought out of a process, I believe it was initiated in Frederton. So we, we arrived at some common specifications there. So we do look at those opportunities to work closely with our municipal partners.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you, Counselor. I was gonna throw a couple of questions in, and then we'll come back around to those councils that wish to speak again. My Commissioner, Huguenholz, is the, did I remember correctly, again, the budget we're talking about for sno, sno, uh, street and sidewalk is 6 million? Did we establish that, Commissioner of Finance, last meeting? I'm getting a, I'm getting a yes.
In round numbers.
In round numbers, $6 million, yeah. So I guess, you know, as I'm, I, here's, here's the context in which I, where I'm coming from. You know, what I've learned in my four, going into my fifth year of municipal politics is that, you know, Counselor Norton says it all the time, you know, what do people care about? They care about the net on the basketball net, and they care about their sidewalk being plowed and the road being plowed. And I, and I get why we have to have priority one, two, and three, and four, but boy, I'll tell you, as a counselor or a member of council, if I'm gonna count the top four reasons, I'm gonna be tagged on social media for something, snowplowing is gonna be at the top of it. So, so I do agree, we, you know, we do have to manage expectations. And I guess what I'm struggling with is, you know, you've listed off here, but just as, as we say, you know, having entire streets that don't have any sidewalk plowed. I, I happen to have been on Gaelic Drive for 20-plus years, and, you know, are we, are we saying now folks are gonna come up through, you know, Westgate and, and, you know, walk on streets? They're not gonna be on sidewalks. And, and so I guess my ques, so that's sort of the spirit is from worry, and I guess my questions are things like, did we explore alternative service delivery models? It sounds like we explored some service delivery models, but did we take a look at that $6 million and say, how could we spend that money differently? What if we hired out? What if we did this route and gave it totally to a third party? Did you, did we go a level above, you know, sort of the exploration that you're doing now?
Yeah, your worship, we, we certainly look at every opportunity to reduce our costs. We all know there were significant changes going into this year, and where we're at now, I believe, represents the best value to the citizens that, that we can offer at this time. It's certainly not something that is ever over and done. We look at this and review the winter management plan on a yearly basis, and we're always looking for opportunities to be more effective, be it through the use of private contractors or other relationships. We definitely need to continue to revisit those.
Yeah. So we did, we did look at, at taking that $6 million, and so how much of our work will be contracted out this year versus our own resources?
It's virtually all internal resources at this point.
So the, so we had conversations with transit, and so does this plan reflect, I mean, with the exception, I guess, of, you know, some of the areas around Gaelic Drive, but have we, have we covered off other school and transit routes? Like, do you feel comfortable that we've...
Yeah, I, I do, your worship. We had a, we had an hour and a half-long discussion with both the district and with the transit, and we went route by route through there to, so they understood, you know, the potential impacts we were looking at, and they communicated with us about what they were seeing out there, where their transit stops were, and where they had significant areas of concern, I believe we've been able to address.
So no, no one from the district talked about Gaelic Drive?
No.
No, serious? Okay. What flexibility do we have, Commissioner? So you've, it sounds like you've, you've divided up your crew between night and, and day crew, and, and we hope that it's gonna snow matching those groups, but if it doesn't, what flexibility do we have to bring more people on to the day shift, less people, and what's the impact on costs?
Your worship, I, I guess I would say the, the main limitation there would be in terms of equipment, available equipment. Right now, during the day shift, it's, every piece of equipment is gonna have an operator assigned to it, and in the evening shift, most, all of our heavy equipment routes will be manned as well.
Okay, so we have a, we have an equipment limitation, is what, is that what I'm hearing?
One, one of the sustainability projects this year to help close that gap was looking at heavy equipment and reducing that heavy equipment. So this was a way that we were able to, again, make the, change that balance between day shift and night shift to deliver the same service over the period of a, of a storm over several days, but do so using less equipment overall.
Right. Okay, I'll come back. Thank you, Counselor Reed.
I just have one quick last question. We have a couple that I can think of, pedestrian bridges, and I got a lot of calls about one of them last year. They're owned by the province? You know, the one that goes...
Yeah, that's correct, on the west, one on the west side and one...
Is there just the two of them, is there?
Yeah, it's just two of them.
Okay. So they've decided, the province has decided, they are not gonna plow anymore, because there was some issue with that. The problem is with the highway going west through there, the lower west side is always felt it's been severed from the west side, so that pedestrian bridge facilitated getting across the highway. So I had a lot of calls, and I'm pretty sure Counselor Norton probably had calls about that, that bridge as well last year, of people trying to get across that bridge, but it was, you know, icy and snowy and all these other things. And it was then that I discovered that it was owned by the province, so are they just not doing bridges anymore? Those pedestrian bridges? Or are they not doing them in St. John? Because I noticed Stanley Street now in the north end won't be plowed, because it probably must just lead over to the pedestrian bridge, I would assume, the sidewalk.
Yeah, yeah, through your worship, I, I, I can't recall when the last time the province actually serviced those pedestrian overpasses. It's been quite a number of years. I would add as well that technically, they would be difficult to service. They're, they're quite narrow, they're enclosed on either sides with, with a fencing, so, so just to have a place to put all that snow would be, would be challenging, because you, you can't, you can't just blow it over the edge with cars traveling by, so...
So not a great thought out plan, apparently, for a winter area. Okay, yeah, no, I was just curious about that, because I know I'll get calls again this winter about it, and I just wanted to get some clarification. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm just gonna go to Counselor Armstrong for his first round.
Yeah, thank you, worship. I guess, it's not so much of a question, but I'm probably the only one around here. I've plowed for 43 years. Forty-three.
Could you get some roots for Counselor Armstrong?
Yeah, I'll jump in, but I did that once for four and a half years ago or something. Anyway, I think it should be related to the public that, on the ground, these plans are laid as best you can, but it depends on the amount of snow, what is absolutely going to happen. And the public has, has to understand that. Mike, excuse me, Commissioner Huguenholz and the staff has done a good job laying it out, and you can't please everybody, but it'll, it'll change in an instant. It goes from four inches and it goes to eight inches. The workload has absolutely, not doubled, it's tripled. That's what people don't understand. The more inches you have, it doesn't double your workload, it can triple and quadruple your workload. And I think if you can explain that, some of it, Michael, and get that out there to the public, because I know it from snowplowing, yeah, it's easy to do the two, three, four inches, but once it gets past that, the public has to understand, we can go by our route, get it done quickly, but after that, there's a benefit that it doesn't double your time, it triples your time, quadruples your time. And I know the plan, and Counselor Norton's gonna speak to the routes on the west side, which I appreciate, but I just want to know from a plower's point of view, it has to get out there, how, how much it takes to actually move snow, and where you move the snow to. So that's, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Norton?
Thank you, your worship. Mike, do we ever, do we ever rent snowplowing equipment in, through sidewalks? Do we ever, instead of purchasing, rent?
The, the equipment itself, no. We've, in the past, we've done the analysis, and it's, it's cheaper from a life cycle perspective to own that equipment.
I, I guess my, I've, I've been, this will be, this will be my ninth year on council, and I've, for nine years, I mean, that how we, how we do this, the same conversation fundamentally hasn't changed. I mean, how we plow routes and the conversation that's around it for, for almost a decade hasn't changed. Lots of, lots has changed within that time, even council chambers themselves have changed. And even how we deliver meetings, how we deliver education, how we deliver a number of different sectors, but this is one that has not changed. I mean, right now, the city of Toronto pay, plow 6,400 kilometers of their 7,900 kilometers of sidewalks, and they've undergone an aggressive clearing the path towards a safe and accessible winter in Toronto, where they're looking at innovative ways to make sure virtually their sidewalks are starting to be cleared and accessible. They're not going to pit neighborhood against neighborhood, we're gonna get sidewalks cleared, and looking at a number of strategies to do so. For example, within 12 hours, if you can't, if the city doesn't plow the sidewalk, there's a responsibility on homeowners, this goes back to Counselor Hickey's point, to, to clear that piece of sidewalk in front of their, in front of their, their dwelling. I'm not saying that's the answer, I'm not saying that this is the answer. They have a $90 million budget, and we have a, a $6 million budget. But what I am saying is that sidewalks, safe and accessible sidewalks on Gaelic Drive and Costa and Rossay Avenue, they matter. And when I see eight, nine Corollas in the, city of St. John Corollas in the parking garage outside of City Hall, as a counselor and as a citizen, I want to take those Corollas and turn them into sidewalk plows. And that's not a question, but it's just commentary on the fact that delivering these services, literally, the meat and potatoes, we have to get this right. We have to. And it concerns me that the same debate and same concerns and same conversation, in the same way that we look at it, has not, in any large degree, changed in close to a decade. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor. It's a receiving file for tonight. Just one more kick at it for me, too. I, you know, this is, I think about again, when I reflect on four, five years, not, not nine or eight, like, eight or nine, like others as well, like, this is no plowing. And again, I appreciate what Counselor Armstrong said there. I think it is important, how are we gonna communicate this plan? How are we gonna manage expectations? You know, the flurry of commentary from the last time that we, you know, that you presented, Commissioner Thinks, was, was very, very active. And, you know, I was trying to explain to folks, and, you know, a couple of people messaged me back either online or sent me an email or, or sent me a note, and it was sort of their message was, I don't, I don't care. I pay you tax, and I want my sidewalk cleared, and I want my, so, so it's a real dilemma we've got ourselves in, and interesting, Counselor Norton, like, perhaps in our strategic plan, we, we, we get into this discussion a bit, you know, maybe we don't need the Corollas. I mean, I know we need the Corollas, but maybe we can't afford to have the Corollas, maybe we need the, the sidewalk plow. For me, I guess, is, you know, I think it's never gonna be perfect. I know I'm not expecting it ever to be perfect, but, but, you know, having, you know, full sections of the city where we can't service for any, for some reason, and, and, you know, how I feel about us managing our costs, I think it's been a theme of mine as a, as a mayor, and I'd certainly like to see us explore, you know, even more vigorously ways to take that $6 million bucks and, and just exhaust ourselves that we've done everything we can to get the maximum kilometers of road and maximum kilometers of sidewalk cleared for $6 million bucks. And, you know, inside, outside, pushing productivity, renting gear, selling Corollas, whatever, we're really talking about safety here, and our ability to grow and, and keep people satisfied and so on. So anyway, I'm sort of kicking and beating at it, but that would be my view. If we haven't exhausted all those options, I'd like to see us exhaust even more options to stretch that $6 million bucks, and maybe the six has to be six and a half, I don't know, or seven or, or whatever, so... Okay, I don't see any other lights for tonight. It is a receiving file, deputy move, seconded by Counselor McKenzie. Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, motion's carried. Counselor Sullivan, come on back in. Common Clerk, next then.
Yes, your worship, next item was an item removed from consent agenda. It's now item 14-point wide.
We'll just have Counselor Hickey leave the room, please.
And the item is 5.2 on your agenda, and it's with respect to St. Vincent's School.
Okay, thanks, just... Recommendations in the report, so you're moving the recommendations, seconded, thank you, by Counselor McKenzie. Just gonna have the city manager just provide maybe for the, for the community, just a very quick high-level, sorry, it says St. Vincent's...
Right. Yes, your worship, the, we, we do have an opportunity to take advantage of some federal funding for a very specific and focused affordable housing program. It came with many criteria. We did, working with Develop St. John, take a look at a variety of different options. This is the option that satisfied all the criteria, and hence why we are recommending it this evening. It will take advantage, like I said, of other people's money in order to further affordable housing within the city of St. John.
Okay, thanks. Maybe I just could build on it for the media and others that are here, have been involved in a couple of meetings with the MP when the, the rapid housing funds became, became available. Develop St. John, as a city manager, took a look at a range of projects that might, might be out, out, that could meet the criteria of a very quick application. This is coming down very, very quickly. So what it's done is it's resurrected an opportunity in the Waterloo Village to bring some affordable housing to the former St. Vincent's High School. 60 units would be the ultimate goal there, and I think it's a win-win-win all around. Obviously, this recommendation is only to make application. There's no, no dollars have been awarded yet, but, but I think, you know, the MP and others feel like this is a project that is gonna compete quite well against the criteria for the rapid housing dollar, so it's quite an exciting project. This is a project that was alive when we first came, when I first came on, on to council, there had been a lot of work done and it fell apart, so kind, kind of nice to bring that one back to, back to life. So the recommendation is on the floor, so, sure. Sorry. Sir McKenzie, there you go.
Thank you, your worship. I just, I just wanted to make a comment, you know, if, if this all happens, and I really hope it does, there's also another project next door to that with the Knights of Columbus and Kevin McDonald. You, you just reminded me about that, the project that didn't get off the ground. That whole street is gonna be reformed. It's gonna be beautiful, you know, it's gonna have a lot of affordable housing on it, so...
So, so Counselor and to rest of Counselors... So, councillor and to rest of council, Kevin's group is involved in this project as well?
No, no, he's involved in the one next door. There's gonna be one where the old St. Vincent's...
On the vacant land.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's gonna be a busy street.
Yeah, perfect, thank you. And fits in within our, you know, within Plan S.J. and density and areas where we already have infrastructure. I mean, it all fits. This is exactly the type of projects that we need. And we certainly know affordable housing has been on the agenda. So, okay, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Thank you. And anyone contrary-minded? Not seeing any motions carried. Thank you, councillor Hickey. Okay, thanks, next item?
Your Worship, the next item is 15.1.
Sorry, 15.1, yes, okay.
15.1 on your agenda, and I see councillor Sullivan already withdrew. This is with respect to Glen Falls School. It is a letter that has been sent in with respect to snow removal on Tim Street. Recommendation is to receive for information.
Okay, thanks, moved by councillor Mackenzie, seconded by the deputy. Could we just modify that city man, I mean, receive for information? But could someone just give a quick call to the folks that...
Yeah, Your Worship, they're already aware.
Okay.
And it is a matter of record now that Tim Street will be included in our sidewalk clearance for this year.
Okay, thank you. Please vote now. Okay, thank you, motions carried, next item. Councillor Hickey will move out, and councillor Sullivan will move in.
Your Worship, 15.2 on the agendas, a letter from C. Hickey with respect to closure of Millidgeville Fire Station. Staff recommendation is to receive for information.
Okay, councillor Mayor, if you move, deputy seconded, thank you. And call the question, all those, oh, sorry, let me open the vote. Please vote now. Okay, thank you, motions carried, next item. Councillor Hickey?
Yes, 15.3 on the agendas, a resignation letter from the Police Commission by Mayor Darling.
It's a, it's received for information.
Sorry, receive for information is the staff recommendation.
Thank you, councillor, moved by councillor Riordan, seconded by councillor Casey, thank you. And on the question, please vote now. Okay, thank you, motions carried, next item?
17.1 on your agendas, a committee of the whole recommendation with respect to a secondment for S. Carson to the New Regional Economic Development Agency.
Thank you, deputy. Councillor Riordan, seconded, thank you. Okay, not seeing any lights, thank you, please vote now. Thank you, motions carried, next item?
17.2 is a recommendation from Committee of the Whole with respect to Fundy Key. And it would be that common council approve amendment three to the Option Agreement entered into on December 19, 2019, between the city and Fundy Key Developments, Inc., in the attached form. And further, the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the said amendment number three.
Thank you, moved by councillor Strobridge, seconded by councillor Casey, thank you. And I'll call the question, all those in favor? Thank you, anyone contrary-minded? Not seeing any, thanks, motions carried, and next item?
And the final item's a recommendation from Committee of the Whole with respect to the New Year's levy. And it's a recommendation that the mayor's New Year levy be canceled for 2021 due to COVID-19 safety protocols.
Okay, thank you, moved by councillor Mackenzie, seconded by councillor Casey, again, thank you. On the question, all those in favor? Thank you, anyone contrary-minded, thanks. Just before we adjourn, I just wanna, I forget to do this most times, but just to say, tonight was a fairly light meeting, hundreds and hundreds of pages. Most people on our staff, well, including council, started their days off at probably six or seven o'clock this morning. But we, to my left, way over, we have our Commissioner of Human Resources, Ms. Stephanie Hossick. We have our fire chief, Mr. Kevin Clifford. We have our Commissioner of Infrastructure, Mr. Brent McGovern. Way over on the right here, we have our Commissioner of Growth and Community Development, Ms. Jacqueline Hamilton. We have our Commissioner of Finance, Mr. Kevin Fudd. We have our Commissioner of Transportation, Mr. Hugo Holtz. We have our city manager, John Collin. We have up in the booth, making sure we can run all our gear, Richard Evans and Pat Anglin. And we have our common clerk, Jonathan Taylor. And we have our general counsel, Ms. Melanie Tompkins. And it's just a small sampling of the folks that work day and night, literally and figuratively, to serve the people of the community. And I'm incredibly grateful for all the work that you all do. Thank you very much. And with that, a motion to adjourn, please. Councillor Mayor, if you, seconded by councillor Riordan, thank you. And on the question, all those in favor? And we have, nay councillor Armstrong, nay councillor Mackenzie, nay councillor Hickey. I may have to break the tie. Okay, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, everybody.